We'll call this a order for our council meeting this evening, Monday, August the 20th. Want to welcome everybody here. It's always nice to see folks come out to a meeting where we take the time to discuss and debate and come up with solutions for things that are going on in Pickens County. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Whitehurst for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
You bow your heads. Dear Lord, we give you thanks for this great opportunity to be in this country that we are in and that we have the ability to govern ourselves. We ask for your wisdom today as we do the business of this county to do your will in representing you. And we ask for your protection over all the service people, emergency service, fire, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, all the guys out there that serve this country, guys and gals. And we ask this in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you, Councilman Whitehurst. And at this time, we're going to enter into our public forum. Madam Clerk, if you will call the folks who come up and speak.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, I'll call Pat Mulkey.
Good evening, Councilmen. First of all, I'm here representing mainly myself as a citizen of the county. I've been sitting back and watching the nice live feeds, so I haven't had to have to face here and say, hey, how you doing or anything. But too many people are asking questions. What is the reasoning for the such pretender to be moved easily when the Time Capsule and the original and the courthouse and the county museum and HHS is in Pickens? And it has a proven track record of producing good events that can draw 25,000, 30,000 people. And I'd like to bring to enlighten you, many, many years ago, we were involved when they moved the 4th of July celebration from downtown Easley to Red Owens to give it a try, and it was a disaster. This is experience. I've been doing this for 35 years, and all I'm doing is offering my guidance here that I think this is a big mistake. And you have an off-campus to straighten it out, because how are you going to move the Time Capsule down there, open it, and then bring it back to work right where it belongs, at the courthouse? And that is just all of my opinion, but a lot of folks in the area are asking the same questions. I just like to bring that up.
Thank you, Ms. Mulkey.
Good evening, members. Thank you all for getting the opportunity to come talk with y'all. I'm Walt Wilkins. I'm a solicitor for Greenville, Pickens County, and certainly my honor to be here with you today. I just wanted to come and sort of give you a quick update on the Solicitor's office and where we are. First, I want to thank each and every one of you for the support that you have given the Solicitor's office. We have grown the office. We now have 10 lawyers and 26 employees that currently are there. And with that support, we're seeing a significant reduction in crime, but we're also seeing a significant reduction in how we're moving our cases. Eighty-five percent of all our cases that come through, that the good sheriff brings to us, and I wish he brought us less, but unfortunately, he didn't do a too good of a job, are resolved in less than one year. And that's been a struggle to keep the wheels of justice moving as well as maintain a jail at a low population and get them through. And so we've done a really good job doing that, and I'm really proud of the work that we're doing. And so with those lawyers and that staff, the flow of justice is moving very swiftly. And they say justice delayed is justice denied, so that's one thing we surely want to avoid in Pickens County. But the bottom line is that the Solicitor's office is in extremely good shape. I would often say that it is the best shape that I've ever seen it. And I started doing this in 2011. And we have been working so well with the Sheriff's Office, coordinating with them and all the law enforcement agencies in Pickens with the other cities as well, in resolving these cases and managing them efficiently and equitably, and of course, taking, always taking consideration of taxpayer dollars, our number one concern. But the staff is at full capacity. We have the computer systems, the infrastructure, everything that we need to do our job is there. So I appreciate that support. I hope that the people of Pickens County feel the good business that's going on in the Solicitor's office and the good work of the Sheriff's Office, because it is a priority and it's been a priority of mine. I know that when I became solicitor, there was complaints since previous administrations that Pickens County had left out from the Solicitor's office, because Greenville's a much bigger county. And it was my priority and my campaign promise that I would not let that happen. And we have not let that happen, I can tell you that. I've tried more cases personally in Pickens that I have in Greenville, because the cases are recorded and they need the attention that they need to make sure that justice is done for the people of Pickens County. So I just want to come and thank you for that. If I can ever be of assistance to you, I'm certainly available on a phone call to talk about any issues that we may have along the way, because it's a tough job, and we have a lot of dedicated employees there that are very passionate about it and dedicated to it. And it's just my honor to be your solicitor, and I want to be there if y'all need me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, this concludes the public forum.
Thank you. We'll move on to our item number three, approval of our minutes. If you're noticing in your packets, you've got June 4th meeting, June, July 9th, special call, and July 19th, special call. I know you guys had a chance to look over this. Is there a motion in a second that we approve those minutes?
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Hudson, second by Councilman Feimster. Is any discussion?
I was not at the special call meeting the night, so I'll abstain from voting since they're all together.
Do you want to do it? We can do it.
You can.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right, on to our administrators' report. Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chairman, members of council. First, I'd like to let you know that the Norris Island Recreational Park is now complete. We're reaching out to council, Senator Riven, cutting far that park. We anticipate sometime this week, receiving the copy of the revised plans for the Madden Bridge Road Park. Once those plans come in, we'll report them over to council, providing everyone's good with those plans, which we're hoping to be the second part of this project happen sometime in September is what our goal is. Second, I'd like to ask Mr. Brian Morrison instead of the podium. Mr. Morrison's recently been hired as our new library director. He wanted to come forward and give a real brief introduction of himself and introduce himself to council.
Good evening. Thank you, councilors, and thank you, Mr. Wilson, for giving me the opportunity to briefly introduce myself. As Mr. Wilson mentioned, my name is Brian Morrison. Consider it an honor and a privilege to have been selected by the Library Board of Trustees in the county to serve as your new library director here in Pickens County. I'm originally from Westminster, just down the road in Arcony County, but currently living in Walden with my wife Rose and two children, Annabelle and Jewel. Earned a bachelor's degree from Clemson University and a master's degree from USC. While I had a wonderful experience in my master's program and appreciated the education I got there, I'll always be a tire-reap part of that since I was forever. I've come to you most recently from the Greenville County Library System, where I had the privilege of serving for about nine years in various roles. Before starting in my present role as library director, I was the discovery services manager of Greenville County, managing several departments at the Hughes-Maine Library in downtown Greenville that delivered a variety of services to adults. And I oversaw county-wide technology training and workforce development initiatives for the library system. And during my time in that position, I had the opportunity to lead the implementation of several new services and projects, including a grant-funded program that combined online learning, weekly in-person meetings, and support from our local technology industry to provide free computer programming training to adults. That's just one example. Prior to that, I held a number of branch manager roles in Anderson and Greenville County as well. And so far in my career, I've been very fortunate to see firsthand just how public libraries are anchor institutions in the communities that they serve and how they can leverage many different assets, including staff, facilities, technologies, collections, and partnerships with the community to support literacy, lifelong learning, and recreation, create instructive and lightning experiences for community members, address various community challenges that we may experience, and connect residents to resources that they need, particularly information resources. And as I think about the future of our library system here in Pickens County, I am looking forward to working with all of you, with Pickens County Administration, the Library Board of Trustees, library staff, and the community at large to provide excellent library service that will hopefully make a discernible and positive impact on our community here in Greenville, basically Pickens County, and will constitute a wise investment of our public taxpayer donors. Thank you so much for your time and the opportunity to introduce myself this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I would also like to importantly, council, know that our cabins at My Creek Park are moving along nicely. We have, I think, six, I think it is, on the ground, right on his feet. We have had an unusually rainy summer. We're running about two weeks behind schedule, so it's probably missed that September for that project. It's complete. We was hoping to have it open for labor day, but it looks like it's only been September. Our jail project is on track, on schedule. Presently, we have about $350,000 ahead of schedule as far as budget-wise. We saved some money on grades and such and cutting field. Finally, I'd like to ask Mr. Nise Quatik instead of the podium. She'll update us some things that's been going on. We've got several projects, I think, the, some of them started with the previous council that went up that Jonesville. So, would you please, her, as I'm done, get some?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Good afternoon, gentlemen. I would talk about risk management, and I could be here all day. But I wanted to give you a synopsis that I think a lot. We have finally, and I say finally, met with FEMA and state, so we should be getting reimbursement soon in regards to the contract, which is a good thing. Hurricane Irwin that we had in October, we have received all payments in regards to that. We weren't sure that we were going to, but because the governor declared state of emergency a week before, we were able to claim our emergency labor that went out and removed trees and debris, and we were able to claim all of that. So we're getting everything that we ever needed, all of that. The multi-jurisdictional plan, you adopted it, and FEMA and state approved it, so we have until June 26, 2023, before we have to do another one. Because it was a multi-jurisdictional plan, I have sent out fact sheets and letters to all the jurisdictions within the county to adopt it. So far, I'm in Morrison's six-mile half, and I'm waiting on the other five jurisdictions to do it as well. The dams where the county gave $150,000 to the solar water conservation. We are four complete, three left, and we have an application into DEHEC right now, and we're waiting for that to be done. We will be doing the one at Silver Country Club. We'll be resuming that in the fall, and then we'll have two more after that. And then on August 14th, we had the FEMA grain and nuclear exercise, but we were afraid of how well we protect our citizens during the nuclear emergency. And FEMA was very impressed by the AOC staff and how well they knew their roles and responsibilities and were able to excel in FEMA sites. So it was great. It's done. We have two more years. But that's all for tonight, but I would love to talk more about risk management. So thank you. I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak.
Thanks. Happy to entertain any questions, council may have.
Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our committee of the whole report. At our last committee of the whole meeting on August the 13th, we had discussions, a review of the fire board in districts. Mr. Willman came and spoke with us about the beginnings of a plan and direction that we were to take. We also brought along with him Mr. Sam Brockington from Florence, who they've gone through a unified fire district process over the past several years, and we wanted to learn what we could about, from him. And a great conversation. We really appreciate the effort and the time. There was, the action that we took was to move it to our next committee of the whole to continue the conversation, which will be coming up next week. We also had log number 94, implementation of new federal guidelines for purchasing relative to grants. Motion by Ms. Vice Chairman Bowers was to send that to council for approval as presented. It was seconded by Enslie Feimster. We are, since that comes as a motion from the committee, it does not require a second here, so I'll, is there any discussion on that implementation of the new federal guidelines for purchasing relative to grants? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. We also had conversation on the 150-year celebration with a timeline and events, pretty detailed, from Mr. Pitts. And after a lot of discussion, there was a motion to send that to recommendation to full council for a vote on a $62,000 budget. The, I'm, I'm, is, Mr. Pitts going to speak with us about this in just a second?
Yes, sir. We've actually had a raise.
All right, let me, so it's, it came as a motion. Is there a second? No, does not require a second. So for, so we're open for discussion?
Yes.
So, Mr. Wilson, can you call Mr. Pitts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things that I wanted to just address with you this, this evening, based on some of the conversations that we had last week, mainly pertaining to the budget for this 150th celebration. We heard you loud and clear, and so we went to work after we got out of that session last week and took that $62,000 that you had allocated out of committee of the whole and began to work a sesquicentennial celebration for that amount of money. And felt like we'd come up with a fairly successful plan of action that really we wouldn't lose much based on a couple of larger items that we took out of that budget. And as the week continued and we continued to work it, we started pooling our resources, and I'm going to give our administrator credit here, along with our attorney and Mike Hayes, the team of people that lead this, this county came together, started to look at the resources that we may have available to us outside of county funds. And so what we have basically come up with is a reduction from $62,000 down to $38,000. And that's, we feel like we can do the same type of an event, now we're going to, we're going to just take a few things out, shorten our day a little bit so that we can reduce costs, but we still feel like we can have a big day for $38,000 as opposed to $62,000. There are a couple of things that, that would hinge on that. First of all, some of our marketing expenses, we can go after some ATAX funds for that, so we're going to request that we get $5,000 worth of ATAX funding to take care of the marketing of the event that we're planning. So that, that would be, that would help us. We have $43,000. If we can get it, that $5,000 of ATAX, that would take us to $38,000. And then the, the other thing that we always planned to do, based on the direction that we knew where we were heading with the dollar amount we were going to be spending, was to go after outside funding. And we are in the process of negotiating somewhere in the neighborhood of an additional $15,000 from outside funding to help even reduce that $38,000 more, so possibly take it down to $23,000. In addition to that, because of cutting the, the budget to 62, we couldn't do the drum show that we had originally thought we might want to do, and we've asked for some support to put on a fireworks show. So we feel like we'll be able to get that funding from an outside source to sponsor the fireworks show and possibly, don't hold me to this, because I don't have money in hand, but additional $15,000 of funding to help. So at the end of the day, for $23,000, assuming we get that $15,000 and possibly more, because we're going to continue to fundraise until the day of the event, if I can get you to support us for a total of $38,000, I feel like we'll be able to put on a show that we'll be proud of at the end of the day, taking it from 62 from last week down to $38,000 this week. I don't know if I've explained it properly enough and it makes sense, but that's kind of where we are.
Where we, government's reducing.
We're trying.
This is a big day.
We've had corporate sponsorship on the stage. We've got some sponsorship on the fireworks, different things like that, and we've got some more possible funding sources outside. We should have commitment on this one.
Which has always been in the works, but until we know where we're going to start, I think we can't, there wasn't any.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the original request for $62,000 to up to $38,000 with the caveat of asking Mr. Pitts to keep us informed as he continues to reduce that number down.
We can do that.
So it's run by the second by Councilman Bowers. Now, is there any discussion on that?
In my understanding, that we have some other stuff that's coming that may even reduce that down further.
That is for sure, nothing.
And so, I'd like to, if we could reduce it down to nothing.
That would be a good thing.
That would make me happy.
Yeah.
So I don't want us, you know, I don't want us to get into, we're going to reduce it to $38,000, but we've come up with some good funding from private sources and that we say, well, we've, we've got this private, so let's have a big one.
No, it's, no, no, it's, in other words, he's not to go, not to go on top of, but to reduce down.
We're at $38,000 today. If the ATAX funding is approved, we get $5,000, we're at $38,000. And that's where we're going to be. If we get additional funding, it will just, to your point, take it down from $38,000, and the goal should be down to zero. So we're not spending any.
Well, you might be happy if we went down to zero.
But I'm not there yet, and I want to make sure we understand that. We've got, we've got to get there.
But we've got really some good leads.
We do.
To get us a good bit more funding.
This is excellent. We got two excellent leads that we should know about Friday. As quick as we get, get those secured, will we send those out in our daily emails to you?
You know, even if we had a, I think this is important enough to save money, even when we had to have a special meeting to come back and approve it, I, yeah, I'd be willing to do that if it's going to save the taxpayers money.
We've got great leads like Gerald talked about. We'll know some answers probably, probably by Friday of this week on some of the money, and then probably two weeks down the road, we'll know some additional answers on the chunk of change. And once we get to, if we get to a zero balance, if that date comes, and then we want to add stuff to it, if we get some additional support, then we can do that. But at this point, I'm asking for $38,000 with an understanding we're going to move forward and trying to reduce that all the way down, and if we don't, and the date cost is $38,000, that's, that's what we need right now.
It's a big drop from a quarter million.
It is.
Yeah. You're going in that direction.
That's where we started.
Any other discussion? Are y'all satisfied with the location of it, in Red Owens?
One thing we've got to remember on the location, I do understand the, if I speak without turn, Jason.
Well, you can answer that.
One of the things we've done on the location is the city, they usually, once we start down this direction, the city business already counseled, they're all accessible, and also counseled a tournament at the J.B. Red Owens Field, so we could have that facility. I think we've kind of too far down the road to change locations at this point in time because of what we've got to see it easy to do.
We've had multiple discussions on location, and I understand and share those concerns that we've had as well. But, but to our administrator's point, there's one other caveat, and that's, that's that we partnered with United Christian Ministries, who've decided to move their event to the, to the sixth, and it's normally at Red Owens Complex, and they moved it for that reason. And so we still have partnership with them for 5K run, Feet for Heat, and that money goes to charity calls. So you've got, to the administrator's point, you've got them canceling their fall event, you've got Red Owens Complex moving all of the athletic events off of their field to make it happen there, and then you've got United Christian Ministries, Feet for Heat at the same time. And I think, and Easley has been over backwards to help us here. I need that to be on record.
Will that free up more parking?
We're working on parking. I've got solutions in the works. If we reduce the size of the event, which we're doing, we make three ups and parking right there on site, and then we've got a couple of buses that we're going to, that are going to cost us nothing, and we're going to go after golf carts to help transport people around and set up a shuttle service that would get people where they need to be.
Continue with the road? Yes, sir. They'll run all day long.
Do you have a plan on the Time Capsule and the logistics of that?
We do. We are, we have a committee of people who we're going to meet, don't have a specific day and time, we can try to meet Thursday, if we can pull it together. And this group of people will, will sign off and determine the factors of what we do. Here's where we are. We're planning to take the Time Capsule out of ground ahead of time and make sure that we can get it out safely. Then on Friday, the 5th of October, we're actually going to open up that capsule at the courthouse, and the 5th is actually from Historical Society, the day it needs to be done. So we're going to have an opening of that capsule on Friday, the 5th. It will be, we'll send out invitations and announcements for VIPs, for the public, and the citizens of Pickens County to come and see what's in the capsule. We're going to videotape and do a documentary of what we find, and then we'll play that documentary back on the sixth and have all the artifacts that are in the capsule on display out at, out at Red Owens Field on Saturday, the sixth. So that's the plan right now. And some of the people who were there are going to be a part of this group.
Get their stuff back?
Some of them, we've got bunkers, maybe we want stuff back, and we just have to deal with that full time.
Will this be in coordination high school football?
It will be. We're going to do it in the afternoon. We're going to do it before high school football. Be it Friday afternoon, then.
Is there anything else to be planned down Main Street, Pickens, that town?
We're not planning.
Like, is it back to 68?
We had, we had thought about it, but no, no plans after that. Just, just simply capsule on Friday afternoon. Yes, sir.
Could you kind of explain a little more about how you guys came up with the location easily for this gentleman right here who's saying?
Yes, sir.
And I know it's something you would explain to us, but apparently this is not an arbitrary decision.
Well, this came from the direction of our chairman, who felt like we do festivals and locations across the county, and that perhaps this would be a good idea to share some of, of the festivals that take place in the county, share them in Easley, and that Easley have, have one as well. Is there any festivals in Pickens? Dacresville has their festival coming up. We've got the Railroad Festival at Central, so it was, it was to share some of the festivities and the activities.
Well, and to your credit, you've been a big part of each of those events. There was, you were onsite at the Central Railroad Festival, at the Isaiah Festival, everywhere that I went, you guys have been a part of, partnered with Dacresville Farm Days, which is coming up in two weeks. There's your blog. Which is, which is an incredible event, too, but it lets, lets everybody celebrate, and then how do you find a place big enough to host where we are anticipating not just a few hundred people, but we're hoping a few thousand people come out? And so that really became the, the conversation on what made the most sense within the, within the county that was kind of central to everybody and easy for people to get to.
Not in a city center.
And not a city center, correct, because each of the cities had their own festivals and events going on there.
Does that answer the question?
Any other discussion? Now, we have a motion before us. It has been seconded. Seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. That's it. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Pitts.
That motion amended, so you'll need to vote now?
The meeting, the, the motion was to go down to 38,000, or up to 38, up to 38,000 with the caveat of Mr. Pitts continuing to reduce that and to report back to us. I mean, we'd like to get you, you or someone to come back and report back at the next meeting of the whole meeting.
So we'll have to vote on the underlying motion now, so you can call that vote now.
Okay, so on the underlying motion now. Thank you for keeping me legal. All right. We've already motioned and seconded that one, too. Okay. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Continue, that's all, that's all we had for the committee of the whole report. Council correspondence. We've been talking about the committee of the whole, August 27th, next Monday night is our committee of the whole meeting. We also are planning, are we still planning, Mr. Wilson, to have an employee meeting on that day?
No, sir. We actually, due to the fact that.
Move that?
We want to move it out. Our litter blitz is September the 20th, 21st?
21st.
And we felt like to.
Need to be closer to the.
Better serve the public, we better do that, be, it's two meetings in one.
Then let me make mention of the litter blitz on September 21st. It was such a huge success that we did this on March the 23rd this year, that at the insistence of county employees. of county employees and several other people, that we continued this process. And we collected 17 tons of trash at the last event that we did, far exceeding Greenville County. I just wanted to say that. Poking at them. But no, it's gotten a lot of notoriety, national attention. It won a national award and competed well at the South County Association of Counties for that award. Very proud of being a part of something like that. So that'll be September the 21st. Is there any other council correspondents? All right. At this time, we'll enter into a period of a motion period for new business.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we add E-911, a discussion about E-911 to the consent agenda.
All right. There's a motion by Councilman Bowers for E-911 to consent agenda, second by Mr. Feenster. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to add a discussion about the prison ministry to our consent agenda.
All right. A motion? I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Mr. Hudson, did you have?
Well, the VA van.
Which we're discussing in a minute, so I get... You can wait on that. Okay. All right. All right, cool. Is there any... Anything else for new business? All right. We'll move on to item number eight. Consideration of Resolution Number 2018-13 authorizing the reimbursement to Pickens County related to the development, operation, and maintenance of a multi-county park from the fees in lieu of adwarem taxes that are generated within such multi-county parks and other matters related thereto. This is just like we've done many times in the past, where we have an opportunity to work with another county on a multi-county park. Is there a motion and a second that we adopt this resolution? Motion by Councilman Feenster. Second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion?
What county is this with?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. This is a resolution that is empowered by the county ordinance that allows us to reimburse ourselves for expenses in the multi-county park.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood that. Yes, sir.
I thought we already had something that automatically did that.
Well, there's an ordinance in place, but it requires an annual resolution to list the expenses. And you'll see that at the end of the resolution.
Got it.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. I'm going to actually turn my pages now, so I don't know what I'm going to do. All right. Item number nine. It's consideration to approve the purchase of a transport van for Veteran Affairs, shared 50/50 with MCPC, with a cost not to exceed $5,000. Mr. Wilson, did you have information on this?
Yes, sir. We'd actually received some information tonight from the VA office that we need to postpone this vote if at all possible. Maybe make a motion to commit it to the consent agenda if possible.
I'd make that motion that we...
Yes, sir.
Do we want to just postpone until the next meeting and table it?
Let's put it in the... Probably need to talk about it in committee. Is that correct?
Motion by Councilman Hudson to put it on the consent agenda. Second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
We do apologize about the late...
Motion carries.
...information about six o'clock tonight, sir.
Okay. I'm just writing that down. Got it. Okay. Item number 10. This is a consideration to approve the request from Dacisville Fire Department to purchase a used fire truck from the Towne Central with a cost not to exceed $14,000. As I understand this, this is to use the money that they have in place to do this?
Yes, sir. Myself, Board Member Hendrick, Mr. Tim Hendricks, Chief McJunkin, and Carl and Tom Turner all went and looked at the truck last week. One of the things, Tim, our Dacisville Fire Board representative, I hope you want to come up and speak or not, Tim, but one of the things he had mentioned in this year's fiscal budget, they budgeted some funds to buy pickup trucks. Is that right? They're recommending instead of buying the pickup truck, we buy the fire truck. Carl, I don't know if you want to talk about the truck itself, or if you'd rather have Ed talk about it?
This truck's in great shape. And from what I understand, if you bought this truck, it is about $400,000. It's probably got enough equipment on it to cover the cost. So this is a really good deal. And should put Dacisville in real good shape as far as their equipment on trucks for the next few years.
At least five, six years.
What year is this truck?
1999.
Yeah.
It's... They just actually spent $11,000, $10,000 to $11,000, I think, chief, having all the pumps and all rebuilt on the truck and everything. So it's in great shape. It's about, I think, $11,000 worth of equipment. We sent you the PowerPoint the other week, went over the truck and all the equipment. I don't know if y'all looked at it or not.
So the Towne Central is really bending over backwards on this?
Yes. Ed? Chief Reynolds is here tonight. One of the things that they actually... I live on Gov Bill, so I talked to... I was calling you, Mr. Chief Reynolds. On Gov Bill is the same truck selling from anywhere from $40,000 to $6,000. They felt like they needed to help their fellow districts and their brothers.
All right. It's a great truck. The thing about it, that's what we're talking about with a unified fire department is basically departments working together. And this is a good example of it. I mean, they are giving Dacisville a great deal on this truck.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept this and allow them to purchase the truck.
Do they already have the funds?
Yes. So we can... There's a second by Councilman Bowers. And the question is?
Do they have the funds?
Yes.
So it's not going to get a bond or nothing like that?
What Tim recommended, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, Tim? In this year's fiscal operational budget, they recommended purchasing a crew cab pickup truck for the chief. They feel like the chief's truck is in suitable shape for the last few more years. They'd rather use that money for a truck.
Reallocation of funds that they're...
Basically, money. And actually, I think we budgeted, what, $28,000 to $30,000? What they got budgeted for the truck? You're only going to spend $14,000 to $15,000 getting this truck, buying it and getting it outfitted and ready to go. So you're actually going to save a little money.
It's actually a good deal for Pickens County because if someone sold this truck to someone in another county, then that piece of equipment leaves our system. And then eventually, Dacisville is going to have to buy a truck. So this is a win for both sides. They recoup some of their costs. And we put a piece of equipment at Dacisville that should stop the D from having to buy a truck for a while.
We also, just as a footnote, we carried a member of the Merchant Services Board. Depending on which direction you guys go, they actually sanctioned the purchase as well.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the Star Trek from the city of Central to Dacisville with a cost not to exceed $14,000. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And motion carries. All right. Item 11A. This is a consideration to approve accommodation of tax funding as recommended by the ATAX You've got the... Now...
Motion and a second to get it on the table.
All right. So I need to get a motion and a second to get this on the table?
A motion.
Motion by Councilman Whitehurst, second by Councilman Bowers. Now, discussion. Mr. Wilson?
Roper's going to have this one?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I filled in as kind of the staff liaison to this committee for this funding cycle. Hopefully, just as fun as possible. But I filled in that duty this year, and it was my honor to do so. The committee met, discussed all the applications. We've had communication for weeks since that time to come up with this draft report, as you see in front of you tonight. The committee was basically operating under the premise that we had about $100,000 in funding available. We didn't know the exact number that would come up. But we did know, and I stress to the committee, that the council gave very specific feedback last year when you heard the ATAX report last year. And last year, if you remember, there was a spreadsheet, and that was kind of the data that you had. The committee this year worked a little more diligently on that aspect of it, trying to give you a product that you could digest easily. Instead of giving you a summary, and what you should see in front of you is a summary of each of the programs that they've recommended for funding, as well as a spreadsheet to let you know, kind of a shorthand version of that. The committee operated well, I believe, and they bring these recommendations to you just as that, the recommendations. You can see on the big board up there, and I don't know how well this shows up, because it's black and white, but those are the logos of the projects throughout the county, from the Big League World Series to the Hagan Mill Annual Celebration, to the Andrew Pickens Grave Site, Central Railroad Festival, Clemson African American Museum, the Winter Bluegrass Jubilee, Dacisville Farm Days, the Ride to the Rock, the Pickens Isaiah Festival. You'll see all of those there that are recommended for funding. The committee felt like, and this is the thing they mentioned several times to me in our discussions, that this provides a good cohesive countywide use of the ATAX funds. They thought it spread it out countywide. Again, this comes to use a recommendation, and I'll do my best. I don't see a member of the committee here tonight, but I'll do my best to get to any questions you may have.
I've got two questions. All right. Can somebody give a background of Pickens County Foreman Hours Foundation with this title of Andrew Pickens Grave, 42 grand? Business sense of the application is that, in my opinion, would be a good idea. However, from a historical viewpoint, it sounds like a good idea. But is that not funded, the whole thing, 42 grand?
It's a... It is the whole thing, to answer your question, yes.
Do they not have any other money anywhere else?
No, not that we're aware of. And the committee thought that in different years, we might look at this a little differently. But they thought since this was the 150th anniversary and that's such a prominent historical marker, they thought that was a good one-time use of that fund for just that purpose this
Also, another question. Holly Springs Center, I noticed that they did not get any money. They requested $7,000. And their reasoning listed was, "Good program you request with no demonstration of attracting overnight tourism." Does that back my data that it does not attract overnight tourism?
Yeah. The thing about the Holly Springs Center, and keep in mind, this is just a recommendation that's being brought to you all, but the committee felt like that there was no demonstration that it would be used to attract tourists. It talked in the application about how they would hope people would camp, or maybe it would be day trips by schools. And so what the committee said is, "Let's wait a year or two and see if they can establish a track record of attracting tourists." So it was really a situation where the committee was applying the definition of tourism strictly to that application. And since it hadn't been funded before, there was no data from previous years to rely on.
But, you know, I mean, personally, I think the class up there is people who come from out of town, take the classes there.
It may be, Mr. Hendricks, that you have data there that the committee didn't have. And keep in mind, this is just a recommendation. There is, we have discovered some more ATAX collection monies that have come in. And so if you felt like you needed to make an amending motion, that's certainly appropriate.
So is there more above what's listed here available?
Yes, there is.
So there's...
Nothing $40,000, did you?
Right.
Has that stuff been carried over from year to year in the past?
Part of the money that we have available, and I don't want to get into specific numbers because I'm going to miss speech, but part of the money that's available this year did carry over from last year. There was some carryover. And that happens normally, I think.
But is it possible, if you guys agree, to give Holly Springs?
Here's what I'd like to do, if I can... One of the things that we asked for when we did this last year was, we wanted the committee to go back to these festivals and find out how many hotels... Because the whole point of this ATAX is collecting from hotels. It's designed to bring people from 50 miles out into this county. And what we'd asked for was data to back up all these festivals that we pay for every year. What I'd like to do is make a motion to send this back into committee with a list of all the applications, not just these, but everything that was sent out to them. And then when they say they have a recommendation, what we want to see is the data that backs up that it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, which is putting heads in beds.
And Mr. Whitehurst, what I would say is, obviously, your motion is in order to be made at this time. But I would point out that every application for those that were recommended and those that were not recommended was provided to you. You did have that data. It was available. And I apologize if it's confusing with the Dropbox link. Dropbox link, but it was such a volume of information, we couldn't email it.
Can we get that put out to the convening committee?
Sure.
That's my motion.
Okay. Motion on the table to move this to committee of the whole for further discussion with specifics on details on data? Is there a second? Second by Councilman Hendricks. Any further discussion?
You know, one of the things that I look at, most of these festivals happen during the summer. And these funds get allocated, some of them after the festival has taken place. So if they need money to advertise the festival, the festival's already over before the money gets there. And I don't know if this process could be earlier in the year, but it's just like Dacisville Farm Days, their festival happens in two weeks. And they're not... It looks like they're not going to get the money. I mean, what funds they're going to get, but they're probably going to hold it to next year.
But does it carry over for them?
No. What he's saying is that they're not...
Usually, they use it for the following year.
We're not... That's something for us to consider.
We have to collect the money before we can give it out. So what they need to be doing is planning a year in advance. This ought to be for next year's festivals. Because we have to collect the money in order to pay it out. And we don't know what exactly we're going to collect.
Right. So we get it. Mr. Roper's point earlier.
Right.
So when does the money, does it come in?
I would defer to the finance director on the timing of that. I think it comes in throughout the year.
Yeah. It comes in quarterly. We get our last check, so we know exactly how much it is in July. In years past, we've always had these, Councilman Whitehurst knows, we've always done these recommendations and go to council like in May. And we cut the checks in June. But as I understand it, there's been a delay in it. So that's why we've always carried money forward, is because the council's made the recommendation approval in May and June. But we haven't received the final check until July in the state. So we kind of guess to make how much we think we're going to get. And then whatever we go spend, we carry forward to the following year.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion that's on the table to send this to committee of the whole for more detail on the data on each of the recommendations from the ATAX committee report? Signify by raising your hand. Signify by raising your hand. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, we have part B now, which is the allocation of the thirty percent money. The guidance that we have here from state law is this thirty percent money, thirty percent money refers to thirty percent of the overall ATAX collection after the general fund monies have been subtracted. So the thirty percent money now needs to be used for tourism or promotion, and it needs to be allocated by council to outside entities or, or other entities that might have an ongoing tourism program.
One of the things that, that staff had recommended, Councilman Senator, is first off, first five thousand off the top, use it for a hundred and fifty year celebration. We were asking that the remainder be split, consider the remainder being split between the Hagan Mill Foundation and the Museum Foundation, kind of like we did last year. Seed money to start these foundations off, they're nonprofits.
Okay. I, I, excuse me, get on the table, I make a motion that we allocate the thirty percent ATAX, ATAX money with five thousand going towards the hundred and fifty year celebration, and the remainder to be split between Hagan Mill and the Museum.
The Museum Foundation.
Is there a second?
I guess a second for discussion.
Second by Councilman Whitehurst. Discussion.
What, did we do this last year with Hagan Mill?
We actually, last year, we gave the Performing Arts Center.
Okay. I remember, we did it for the curtains and that. How much money are we talking about?
This year, Ralph, and I correct my wrongs, I seem to take thirty, or no, exactly, I think Ralph's got his sent an email today, it's not.
We have forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
Forty-eight thousand dollars.
Forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents.
So do we have a, a particular, what they're gonna do with this money?
Well, this year will be kind of seed money to start the foundation off as far as tourism, and, and this money has to go to a nonprofit.
And it has to go specifically for tourism promotion, advertising promotion kind of-
Right, 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 right.
Same, same principle based on the other, I mean, the, 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 was it fifty mile radius or something?
That's right.
That's right.
So we've got this one, and who's the other one?
Museum Foundation and the Hagan Mill, they created nonprofit foundations for the Museum, Hagan Mill.
This is what the three foundations we got.
We had the Performing Arts Center last time, so this would-
This would be the other two, so all the-
The other two foundations you set up, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify, in moving the five thousand dollars to the hundred and fifty year, the remainder split between Hagan Mill and the, the Pickens County Museum, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Item number twelve. It's consideration to approve, to approve a request to carry over for, to carry over forward, to carry forward the remaining funds of pending special projects from fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen. This is what we have done in the past. You guys got a listing, I know I just saw that, of those items, which you, do I need to read those out? No, we're good. Motion. Motion by Councilman Bowers. Second by Councilman Feenster. Any discussion on moving this forward?
Budgeting?
Yes, sir. This is projects that were allocated for, that are still in, I guess, in the process of being completed, is what these are.
Any other discussion? All those signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right. Item number thirteen, consent agenda. We have on the consent agenda minimum maintenance roads and traffic devices, to send that to Committee of the Whole, also the E-911, and the prison ministry. Oh, I'm sorry, and the, the veterans' van. I need a, a motion and a second that we approve this. Motion by Councilman Bowers.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Here, in just a second, I guess we're gonna enter into executive session on several items to discuss personnel issue with the library, personnel issue with tourism, contractual issues for Georgia's Creek, Creighton Creek sewer update, and the water authority request, economic development update on project overlook and project space. Boards and commissions for vacancies with ATAX, Alcohol, Drug, Behavioral Health, Appalachian Council, Government, Assessment and Appeal, Beautification Committee, Cultural Commission, Economic Development Alliance, Fire District Awards for Central, Crosswell, Dacresville, Easy, Liberty, Pickens, Pumpkin Town, Rocky Bottom, Shady Grove, Six Mile, Library Board of Directors, Pickens County Grievance Committee, Planning Commission, Public Service Commission, Tourism Board, Zoning and Appeals, Hagan Mill, and Pickens County Nonprofit. I need a, a motion and a second that we enter into executive session after a brief recess of five minutes. Motion by Councilman Hendricks, second by Councilman Bowers. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. And we are gonna take a brief recess and then executive session. Thank you, guys. I would, I'll just back into, to return from executive session, we have a couple of things that we need to work on here. A resolution, I make a motion that we have a resolution authorizing our administrator to execute asset purchase agreement with easily combined utilities for capacity and interest in Georgia's Creek line. So, second by Mr. Feenster. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. I also make a motion to commit project overlook to our Committee of the Whole meeting at the next meeting. Second by Councilman Whitehurst. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Mr. Bowers. Well, you're here. I'll get him, you're here.
I want to make a motion to appoint Samuel Britt Gillespie to Zoning and Appeals.
Motion to put Mr. Gillespie on Zoning and Appeals.
Second.
Second by Councilman Whitehurst. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries, Mr. Feenster.
I move we reappoint Margaret Thompson to ACOG.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Let's see, Mr. Councilman Hendricks.
I'd like to make a motion to dominate the lead's hope to the Pickens County Hagan Mill Nonprofit Cooperation Board.